Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call this regularly scheduled meeting of the Planning Commission to order. It's Thursday, November 9th, and the time is 7:03. Can we have a roll call, please?
I have Commissioner Lowell.
Present.
Commissioner Baker.
Here.
Vice Chair Korsak.
Present.
Chairman Barnes.
Present.
Let the record reflect it. You gotta call Sims, but he's vacant, he's absent.
Thank you. Now, would one of the Commissioners like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. Next item, approval of the agenda.
A motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Baker, a second from Commissioner Lowell. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries four to nothing. Next item is approval of minutes, of which there are none. Next item is consent calendar. There are no items on the consent calendar. Next on the list, the public comments portion of the meeting. Any person wishing to speak, please turn in a speaker request form, and a clerk will call your name.
Yes, I have Rafael Brugeras.
Good evening, good evening, Chairman, Chair, and Commissioners, staff. I went to a meeting on November 1st here at the center, and it was hosted by Moreno Valley. But the Air Board were there sharing the new rules about trucking, and all the regulations that are now here and will be enforced in 2020. So I figured I'd bring you a gift, so you can be aware of the new rules that are here now and in the future. Because these are the questions that you're gonna be asking developers, what kind of trucks are gonna be, are going, uh, excuse me, are going to be coming into the city. So, there are gonna be changes. It was a packed house, and I talked to the CHP, and I talked to the, to the, another group that goes around testing the trucks with smoke. I saw the machinery. And, um, they're out there. They're out there doing their job, and they will enforce the law. So, the one thing that came to my mind, that now is gonna make it harder for trucks, especially older trucks, to get registered in the state of California, especially in 2020. Starting 2020, they must meet the standard, or they cannot register their vehicles. So from now on, they have to be up to 2010. So you have heard this before from a developer. He gave us this insight a few years back. But, at that meeting, it came to life, hearing it from the professionals, that this is going to happen in our state. So, and I looked at all the new equipment, and all the new devices, and all the new trucks. So there is gonna be a big, big change. And, one of the things I wanted to bring and share with you, in the pamphlet, you see a rig. A lot of people see these trucks delivering merchandise, but you don't see them parked up against a supermarket. What you see in the small paper are the smaller trucks. These truly are the main trucks that you see in our city. These are the ones that deliver all over the place. This is what people see. And, what I want you to know, as you go on in the future, is, don't let people cause you to have a mistake between the two trucks, okay? You're not gonna see 4,200 trucks, trips of these kind of big trucks in the city. You're gonna see a lot of little ones, especially through the holiday. Big trucks come in, they park at some of these places where the, um, they dispatch the big, the trailer, then these small trucks pick 'em up, and they bring 'em into the city. Because the city has pounds, they're not allowed to come into the city over 14,000 pounds or so. So you're not gonna see big rigs unless they're on the, uh, how'd you call it, on the truck lane. If they're in the truck lane, they are allowed to be there, because I followed them, and I saw what they did. So they have it pretty well controlled in our city. So these are the new rules that are coming. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Progress. Any more public speakers?
No.
All right. Moving on next, non-public hearing items. Appears we have none.
We have none.
Excellent. Moving along. Now to the public hearing portion of the meeting. Case one, PEN 17-0164, applicant is West Core to New Hope LLC. Do we have a staff report?
Chairman Barnes, members of the Commission, I'll be giving the presentation this evening. I know we have a very light agenda, and this is the only thing we have, but it is important, and so, it's a modification to a plot plan, to basically consider the revised exterior colors for a large building that's very close here to City Hall, down at the end of the street here at Veterans Way and New Hope. The actual applicant is West Core, New Hope LLC. They were invited to the meeting this evening. Not sure why they didn't attend, they hadn't called me or let me know, but they are aware that there's a meeting this evening. West Core recently bought the building and started to initiate a change of the paint. They told me they're investing about $65,000 to paint the building. However, the building caught several people's attention, it was brought to my attention. You know, are they allowed to do such a drastic change? Because if you've driven by the building, you'll see that it's much more bright, it's a white color, and they're incorporating their blue corporate color, which is kind of a blue or purplish, this may be the applicant here. In any event, the original building, which is about 366,000 square feet, was approved in 2013, and it had a slate of colors that were approved for the project. The project site, in the image that's shown up here on the screen, is located just south of Alessandro Boulevard. It's visible from both Alessandro Boulevard and Cactus because of its size, and it is bookended by Veterans Way on the east, and Ellsworth on the, um, on the west. It's the building about in the center of the, of the building there. When this project was approved, it was, it required a change of zone, and it required a plot plan. And the change of zone required both the Planning Commission's consideration and the City Council's consideration. And so, ultimately, the plot plan which was approved did include a slate of colors. This is the proposed colors that West Core would like to change the building to. It's much more bright and white. It is, like I said, has a blue color band that's gonna be at the base of the building, and then again at the top of the building. The glazing on the, on the building, which the windows are not gonna be changing, and then the highlights on the building, I believe they're integrating some form of silver or gray. So it'll be a white with a silver and the blue. The image up here is maybe a little difficult to see, but we went out and we looked at what the existing buildings around the site look like today. And the approach, if you're coming from, along Veterans Way, from Cactus, the bottom image there shows gray and white, smaller scale business park buildings. And then it transitions to the beige earth tone colors of the, of the large West Core building today. Off of Ellsworth, at Golden Crest, the image maybe doesn't pick it up, but it's also a white with gray and a little bit of beige colors to it. This is the color of the existing building. The building here reflects more of the colors that are between this building and Alessandro, in the commercial center. We have a commercial center that has a couple of fast food restaurants in it, there's small office buildings that were used for educational purposes, and we recently had a banquet hall that was finished in that complex. They all have earth tone colors incorporated, and they also are using some stone veneer on the buildings, and that's also similar to the color palette on the retail center that is off of Ellsworth at Alessandro, just west of the site. These images, which are in your staff report, were some pictures that we took of the building to show how the color is changing, because the applicant had already started to paint, to paint the job, paint the building. We asked them to stop. They are anxious to have this action taken by the Planning Commission, so that they can hopefully resume painting the building and complete it. And they said that they have brokers and others, people that they'd like to invite to the building to start trying to market it for new tenants. So we tried to expedite it to get to the Planning Commission as soon as possible. The images that I left on your dais this evening are the stamped approved plans from the original approval. And it also includes, on the other side, a condition of approval, P2. And if you read the condition, P2, it said that the site shall be developed in accordance with the approved plans on file with the Community and Economic Development Department. And since these plans were stamped and approved, and they had a color palette that was actually approved by this body, that's the reason it has to come back to you for this modification. A building of this size can make a significant impact on the environment, and in this area, because it was a change of zone, going from what allowed 50,000 square foot buildings to allow the 366,000 square foot building, the colors and materials were a point of consideration during that approval. The, if you look at this image that I copied for you, it does look like it has some greens in it. And so, I looked at that with the staff, and we were trying to understand why doesn't the building look green today? And so we looked at some of the colors. So the other sample you have in front of you today is another sheet. It's what we took off the internet, and it's what Nantucket, um, Nantucket Dune actually is supposed to look like. And, all we could conclude is that the copy quality, what was ended up putting in our file, must have been distorted by our color copier at the time, but the Sherman Williams Nantucket Dune, which shows up as kind of a foam green, actually was intended to be a beige, which is what's on the building today. So, that's why these were put up there, just for explanation purposes. With that description of the background of the building, and the reason it's here today, we found that the project is exempt from CEQA, and we're asking for the Planning Commission to consider the determination for a categorical exemption as part of your decision. And if you agree and wish to approve the modification, then we'd ask you to approve Resolution 2017-37, and thereby approve the amended plot plan, PEN 170164. That concludes our presentation. I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Rick. Would the applicant like to make a comment?
Nick Marcos with West Core Properties, owner of the subject property. We appreciate Mr. Sands Meyer working with us to get this put on the agenda so quickly. We started painting and didn't realize that it required other approvals from the city. So we do apologize that we didn't go through the normal review process for this. But it is critical to our business plan to repaint this building. We recently purchased it in August. It has been vacant since it was delivered in, right around early 2015. We feel that it's a great building, but we feel that it could use a refresher. And we've used a similar type of paint palette in other buildings that we have in our portfolio, and it has done quite well in, and been well received in the market. We are looking to do this quickly, just because we would like to start marketing the property. We already have it marketed for lease, however, we'd like to finish this and then start bringing in tours. So, thank you again for hearing this tonight.
Thank you. Any questions of staff or the applicant? All right, well, Rick?
No, go ahead.
You're right. So, with no further questions, we'll open the public hearing. And do we have any speakers?
Yes, we have Rafael Brugeras.
Because you're gonna have to get a big sign. Public comments. Thank you.
Good evening again, Commissioners, staff, and our guests. I went by that place, and it took me a while to find it, because my GPS threw me off. It's so easy to find it, if you go down Alexandra, make that quick left, and it's right there. I went from one end of the building into the other, and I looked at everything, and I looked at the two tone colors in the neighborhood, the basic ones that we always pick, okay? The ones like right behind you, that same type of color that we pick. So anyway, I went and I took pictures, because I wanted to make sure that, because when you, I took a copy from my printer, it looked like a, like a olive, lavender color. So, I wasn't sure what color he was thinking of. I thought it was gonna be a brighter color. But when I got there and I looked at the ones that, the original one that you saw, and then I saw the one. I know it's far, but it's a beautiful picture. It's a beautiful gray with the white trimming, the nice blue on the bottom, and it goes, if you can see it, it goes all the way back. It's a real, real nice bright white. It shows the building real well. So I'm thinking, for the colors that he's using, could be something with the sun hitting the wall, the white, that's what I thought of. But it really stands out real pretty, especially if he's using the color, because I just asked him. I wanted to make sure, before I speak, that it was gonna be the one I like, not the old one. See, this is the old one, and here's the new one. The new one looks real, real good. I mean, I can give you my camera, and you can look at it, because if you go by there, you see beautiful charcoal gray with the nice white trimming, the real nice bright blue on the bottom, the royal type blue, and then it's all white, real clean. It's a real nice clean color. It's a nice, it's in a nice location, that building. It stand, it will stand out real well if you go look for it. Because if you tell somebody to look for the brown building, you can get lost in there, because I did. So if he says look for the blue and gray, white building, you can find it real fast on Hope, real quick. So it's a nice project, I hope it gets approved, so we can start making the city look brighter. Instead of, I mean, there's nothing where earth tone colors, but we have so many of them. They all look alike. We need to change a little bit, just a little bit. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Rafael. Any other speakers' lips?
No.
All right. With that, we will close the public hearing and move on to deliberation. Any questions? Commissioner Lowell?
I have one. In the staff report, it says, "As part of the original project of approvals for the, the change of zone and plot plan, colored elevations that reflected the current color scheme were presented to both the Planning Commission and City Council, and were presumed to have been an integral consideration for approval of the project. However, it's noted that the color scheme was not included as a specific condition of approval or mitigation measure for the project." If anybody wants to change their color of their building, they have to come back in front of the Planning Commission and City Council?
Not, not exactly. If they're changing the colors and they're consistent with the original colors, and they're, our municipal code does identify use of earth tone colors in most of our commercial centers and in our industrial complexes, there's an allowance for the more whites and the grays. In this particular instance, this building was a business park, and it was changed to light industrial, which basically allowed it to, to have kind of a, it was on a transition spot. I mean, on the north side of New Hope is, is a commercial center, on the south side where this building exists is now light industrial. So, the, the fact that this plan was actually stamped and approved, and the colors were what was actually adopted, is, is why I felt that it was important to bring it back here, because it's such a large building. The other thing that we were trying to reflect in that statement in the staff report is that the colors themselves were not spelled out in the condition of approval, but condition P2 does say that the building must comply with the approved plans that are on file. And so that's why I gave you a copy of this condition. And so, because there, this is the stamped plan, and those are the approved colors, and because it did come through a, a hearing, our municipal code says that any modification to a condition of approval is subject to going back through the original approval body. The original approval body in this particular case is, ultimately could be the City Council, but we're not, we're not asking for it to go that far. We believe that we can exercise some discretion to bring it back just to the Planning Commission at this point. In other instances where the ultimate, the approval body might have been the Planning Commission, not the City Council, we may exercise the right to delegate that responsibility to the Community Development Director in some commercial centers and in the industrial complexes. I think it does, the code does allow for that discretion. So, that's the one nuance here, that it, this was a particularly important decision by the city. I wasn't here at the time that it was approved, but from what I heard from the staff, the color selection was an important consideration, the landscaping, and that transition spot. We've had favorable comments on the existing building. Some people do like the color, but beauty's in the eye of the beholder. I also thought that coming here this evening might be helpful to kind of get your, your take on how you would like to see us address colors on projects. We have lots of projects that are gonna be coming through, we, we do pay particular attention to them. The buildings across the street to the east of us are adopting more of a cream or off-white colors, not such bright whites. I noticed along the 215, in the March JPA areas, they use a lot more browns and earth tone colors. I noticed when you come off of Cactus from the 215, where you can see this building, you're, you're seeing, most of those large buildings are actually using creams and browns or, or earth tone colors. In the south end of town, they're also starting to use some more off-whites with maybe a green or a grayish brown in some areas. The Procter and Gamble building is probably the, the one that matches this one the closest, which is a very, very bright white building. And then the other one that matches this building very closely, and West Core did point out, was the Federal Mogul Building, which is right off of Cactus, right behind us, which is a very stark white with a bright blue band around the top. So, it is, it is kind of, and Skechers is, is just a white building for the most part. That particular developer doesn't like the, what he calls the racing stripes. He likes to have a clean image, and if you look at the specific plan that was approved for the World Logistics Center, he was very particular in that project to not wanna have buildings that felt like they had kind of a patchwork on them. So he thinks that, again, beauty's in the eye of the beholder, but his vision for that area of town was gonna be a different type of architecture, a different type of paint schemes. So, we have the, the white and the gray and the blue in other areas of the town. We have lots of beiges, and so I'm just looking to you guys to, to tell me if this is important enough to you guys or not, so.
Well, the, what I was gonna extrapolate to is, most of the projects that come in front of us, including tentative track maps, parcel maps, these plot plans generally have some sort of architecture, have some sort of elevation and color scheme. How far reaching does this go? So, in my neighborhood, we had five different plans and three different elevations and multiple color schemes. If my neighbor wants to change the color of his house to something else, because most of the conditions of approval have a P2 or something along those, where they conform to the approved plans, does that homeowner have to come back and get approval from the city to paint the house? How far down does that go?
We have not, we have not exercised that. We have not, we have not asked those homeowners to come back to us. We believe that the, the neighborhoods will somewhat self-regulate. If there's a homeowners association that has a color and architectural guidelines, that's one of the options. There are some neighborhoods that don't have that level of detail. We, we just don't, we don't drill down to that level at this point.
Okay.
Any other comments?
I would just like to say that in the design industry, color palettes change every seven years. You look at the color palettes in your home, and you're always refreshing and changing. The earth tones are kind of phasing out, and these new brighter colors are coming in. I think it's a beautiful color scheme, and I think it really brings the building out, the elements. Because, you know, industrial buildings can be really boring. But I think the design of this and the way the color is put down in the new palette makes it look a lot more attractive for the client. And I, I'd like to see more buildings around here be brighter than they, than the regular earth tones. I love it.
Personal observation, I'm reluctant to tell people what to do, at least to this extent, with their property. I, I think variety is good, and I would normally not weigh in on the color of a building, unless it was really, really bad. So, yeah. In the future, it's something that I'm not particularly concerned with. I'd like the market to drive, you know, how buildings look and all that, because we wanna welcome all comers and people that have new ideas. We don't wanna, you know, push them away by being too restrictive. I don't have a problem with it at all, and I generally don't for, for future.
I personally think it's a great project, and I'd like to see us move forward with it.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. I don't think this is a big deal. So anybody wanna make a motion?
First off, I think we should make all developers paint half the building, so we can see what it looks like, and then make a decision. I think that'd be a great idea.
That doesn't answer my question.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve Resolution number 2017-37, recognizing that this item is exempt from CEQA, and approve PEN 17-0164, subject to the attached conditions of approval.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Lowell, a second from Commissioner Baker. Waiting on Commissioner Sims. Motion carries four, zero. We have a wrap-up from staff.
Yeah, the action you did take is an appealable action. If any interested party would like to file an appeal, they can file an appeal through the Community Development Director within 15 days of this action. If an appeal is filed, it will be taken forward to the City Council within 30 days for consideration.
Thank you, Rick. Uh, let's see. I think that pretty much covers it. Any Commissioner comments? Any staff comments?
Actually, I would like to just, under staff comments, just talk about this particular issue a little bit further. Having heard the dialogue from the Commission, I think it would be helpful if you gave us a little bit of direction. What I'm taking from this is, is maybe you would be okay with us delegating this sort of a decision to the Community Development Director, and we can make it at a staff level if, if we thought it was an issue. I also want to point out that not too long ago, probably within the last four or five months, the Avocado Burger restaurant across the street at Frederick and Alessandro was, was repainted. And it was actually repainted a very awkward yellowish-green color. And it, we did get some, some comments about it, and we reached out to them as a courtesy, wrote them a letter and said, hey, you know, well, our code does have some guidelines on, on making sure that buildings look compatible with the adjacent buildings of the neighborhood, for the, for the good of the aesthetic of the community. And we, we actually, when we contacted the manager, the manager's feedback was, you know what, we really don't like the color anyways, so we appreciate you telling us, and we'd love to work with you, and we wanna be good neighbors. And they ended up painting that building pretty quickly, and it actually blends in with the neighborhood a little differently than, than that yellow. So, we, as staff, we're just trying to, you know, keep the city, you know, going in a direction where things look like they fit. We don't wanna overstep our bounds, and we don't want to, you know, tell people that they can't, they can't have some, you know, of their own interest expressed in their, in their homes and stuff. So, I just wanted to ask if, if you guys could give us some parameters, when you say that you don't wanna hear about colors, I understand, I'll take it back, and we don't want to bring colors here, but is there's some guidelines, if they're really bright, or if they're... But is there's some guidelines, if they're really bright or if they're zebra striped or if they're, I mean, is, what are you asking us to look for?
I think as a failsafe, just bring it in front of us. Just to cover our bases, cover your bases, just, it opens up a discussion in case some neighbors don't want it. They want, it gives the neighbors a forum to speak. But generally, I don't think colors are a big deal.
Okay.
Well, um, I think if you stick to neutral palettes, whites, beiges, with accents of different colors, um, I think if you're going to go for a purple building or a red building, which would be my choice, but not the neighborhood's choice. So if, if it's something that's just so awkward and so off, then I would bring it to us. But as long as it's in those color, color bounds, it would, especially the brighter ones, I would find more appealing. But no zebra stripes.
Okay. So, so I appreciate the feedback and um, I apologize, this was the only thing on the agenda, but to me, it was helpful for us and the staff. So thank you very much.
Oh, yeah, I was, the only observation I was going to make is unfortunately, I think it's kind of a very fine line and you don't know until you actually see it in the flesh. And so again, I would be reluctant to be overly controlling. I would rather err on the side of caution, not tell people what to do and let the market and the public speak out and, you know, yeah, you're going to strike out occasionally. But the only way that you, you know, can break new ground and push the envelope is to try things. And they don't always work, but I think it's worth the risk as opposed to dictating what people do with those types of things. Whether it's architectural or color or, I don't know, I like the variety. At least the attempt at it. Any other comments? All right. Well, congratulations to the applicant. You can get the rollers out and get painting. Um, thank you staff for the report and uh...
Everybody have a happy Thanksgiving.
Yeah. Oh, uh, that's right. We will, uh, at this point adjourn the meeting to the next December fourteenth? The next regularly scheduled meeting, December fourteenth. Is that correct, Rick? All right, meeting's adjourned. Thank you.